Okay, it's now 6:32. I'm gonna call this meeting of the Landale City Council to order. I'm gonna ask the city clerk, Harvison, to give us the roll call, please. Madam City Clerk.
Okay, Mayor Proton Kearney?
Here.
Councilmember Suarez?
Here.
Councilmember Kaufman Gorman?
Here.
Councilmember Cuevas?
Here.
Mayor Pullen Miles?
Here.
All members are present.
Clerk Harvison, thank you. Let me make sure I'm saying your name correctly. Give me the wink if I'm not. Okay, let's have Councilwoman Cuevas lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
Please stand. Right hand over your heart. Ready? Begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation without indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
I want to thank everyone for coming out tonight and watching tonight in the special council meeting for the Landale City Council regarding the adoption or consideration of the adoption of the budget. Let's start, continue our agenda with item C, or communications, where you have opportunity to speak to this body on items that are not on the agenda. If you'd like to speak to this body on items that are not on the agenda, please approach the podium at this time. If you do have a card, we ask you to give your card to the clerk for our records. We would appreciate that. Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. Over to the podium. Thank you.
Okay. My name is Jane Wiltfong, citizen of Landale for 40 years. I am here to represent the request that Landale join with 22 other cities in the county of LA to make a resolution of no confidence in LA District Attorney George Gascon. He has dismantled the hardcore gang crimes prosecution unit in LA County, and 700 open cases are not going anywhere. What about the victims? Even the sheriff is against this dismantling of the hardcore gang unit, and he thinks it's gonna threaten the safety of our people. So, he will try violent 17-year-old repeat offenders as juvenile. He encourages motions to release any defendant who has served over 15 years in state prison regardless of crime committed. His own DAs are unable to attend parole hearings, and he ignores pleas by victims. And George Gascon refuses to uphold the law, and his failure to prosecute crime is endangering the people of LA County. And so I would appreciate your consideration in having a resolution of no contest for him, no confidence in him. So 22 cities have already joined this, so maybe we can be the next one.
Thank you, ma'am, for those comments. We'll provide some comments if desired right after we take up public comments. Thank you. Are there anyone else wishing to speak to this body for public comments? CNN, I'm gonna close public comments at this time. Collectively, I'm gonna ask the council if anyone wishes to make any remarks. They can do so at this time, rather than going down our usual road, if anyone wants to signal that they wanna make any comments.
Yeah, I'd like to say, so I did have the opportunity to speak to one of our residents, and they wanted us to discuss, you know, our new deputy or the district attorney, sorry, for LA County, and I have no problem discussing it. I think it's something we can definitely discuss. And also, I would invite our captain to also maybe give a few words with regards to crime rates and how that's impacted their work. So, I'll pass. If anyone else wants to discuss it, I have no problem.
Well, let me say this. I have no problem with the captain giving us the crime rate statistics, but I'm reluctant to tie that in with such efforts, the recall efforts or efforts to have a resolution of no confidence, because it puts the captain in a political position, because this will be a political decision, a political call, if you will. But I have no problem, of course, receiving that type of information as we do from time to time, but I would conscious this body not to put the captain in a position where it's a political situation. So maybe we could do it, maybe he can give us a written report or something. We can consider that if we decide to have an open discussion on it. If that's okay with everyone. Anyone else wanna speak on this side?
I just would like to discuss it. I don't know if I wanna do the resolution, but I would like to discuss and get more information from the sheriff department so we could make the proper decision.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay, with that, that will be public comments. I wanna thank you for providing public comments. Let's move on with our agenda. We're now at item E, which is our consent calendar. What is the pleasure of this body concerning the consent calendar?
A motion to approve the consent calendar.
Okay, the motion's been made by Cuevas that we approve the consent calendar and seconded by Kearney. Is there any discussion on the motion? CNN, I'm gonna ask the city clerk to conduct. No, I'm just gonna ask the council to vote. Thank you. Thank you for giving me the...
Okay, motion passes.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. The next item on the agenda will be item F, under administration, five is fiscal year 21-22 appropriations limit. Let's have the staff report.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, and members of the city council, thank you. Before we get into items related to the appropriations limit and then also the budget, I wanted to take an opportunity to introduce Mr. Mike Matsumoto, who's seated here. I think most of you have heard about him coming on board to help us with our budget, but I don't think any of you really had an opportunity to meet him. I think the mayor has.
Yeah.
I wanted to introduce Mike. Mike is with the firm of Government Financial Services. He is a registered certified public accountant. He has a lot of experience that is to our benefit. He has worked for cities in the capacities of finance director, administrative services director, as well as assistant city manager. But in addition to that, he also has many, many years of experience working as a consultant for several cities throughout Southern California, doing the type of work that he's now doing for us. So he comes to us with much experience. So, I was gonna say a few things about the budget, but I'll save that till later so that Mike can, at this point, go into a few comments regarding the appropriations. So with that, I'll turn it over to you, Mike. Thank you.
The item before you is the appropriations limit required by Article 13B of the California Constitution. And the methodology was developed by the League of California Cities after Prop 111 in the early 90s. I believe it was about 1990, 1992, which changed the methodology. And the League of California Cities put out the methodology to calculate the proceeds from tax, which is your limit on appropriations from proceeds of tax from the appropriations limit. And Prop 111 had drastically changed Article 4. So before you, you have the appropriations limit, the appropriations subject to the limit, and you can see that you're not even close to that limit. And the factors for adjusting, you have an inflation factor and a population factor. And both of those came from the California Department of Finance issued in early May every year.
That's the end of your report?
That's the end.
Okay, thank you for that report. Let's have, Mr. City Attorney, would you like to take a motion on this item, or receiving file? How would you like to do?
Yes, sir, we do have a resolution, so we do need a motion.
Okay, let's entertain a motion to adopt the attached resolution. Okay, so it's been moved that we approve the attached resolution by Kearney?
Oh, seconded that.
And seconded by Cuevas. Is there any discussion on the resolution, on the motion, I should say? CNN, I'm gonna ask the council to please vote on item five.
For item number five, the motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, madam. Next item on our agenda is item number six, fiscal year 2021-22 budget workshop. Let's have the staff report.
Thank you again, Mr. Mayor. So here we are. We've produced the budget. We've reviewed the budget with the city council budget subcommittee. And what we have in front of you today is the FY 21-22 budget. And with all the work that's gone into it, I can tell you that the budget is sound, the budget is balanced. And that includes the several initiatives that have been brought forward by me, by department directors, as well as the city council. And in the end, with all items included, we again have a balanced budget with a surplus of approximately $400,000. So with that, I wanted to thank the members, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to thank you and the members of the city council for all of your patience through this process. It has been a challenge. But again, now it is ready for your review and approval. And with that, I will turn it back over to Mr. Matsumoto.
Mr. Matsumoto, yes, sir.
Thank you very much. I prepared a brief overview. We have the staff report. You've got the binders, or if you're, someone went online, it would be the large PDF that has the budget summaries, the revenue summaries, the personnel summaries, and all the division summaries and fund summaries behind there. So COVID-19 shut down the economy a year ago, and so last year's budget, I'm sure, was a lot different from this year because people were trying to figure out how the pandemic and the shutdowns are affecting everything. But things are opened up now. I think all the restrictions on businesses that are required to be closed have been lifted. There are some capacity restrictions on large capacity venues, but generally, all businesses are now allowed to open. And the general fund is balanced. Revenues are projected to increase, and expenditures have also been increased as services can return. There are several items to consider. We went through the budget in detail with the budget subcommittee, and there were several items that were to be brought forward to the whole council for consideration. And those are listed in the Agenda Act, the General Report, and have also included them in the staff report. I also wanted to let you know that the American Rescue Plan was signed by President Biden in March 2021, and the city will be getting approximately $7.7 million. This budget reflects the revenue. There are no expenditures shown yet because the city will have to develop a plan to figure out how we're going to spend that money. The Department of Treasury has issued FAQs and an interim rule, but the final rules, they're still accepting comments, and the final rules won't be out, at least until late July, probably not until August. So this is the summary of your general fund. And as Kevin indicated, there is a $402,800 surplus, meaning more revenues and transfers in than the expenditures and transfers out to other funds. Revenues are projected to increase over the prior year amended budget. That's in the staff report. You can see the table in there. The big drivers in the general fund are the taxes, which are primarily property taxes, Measure L, and motor vehicle increases, bringing up the revenues. And the surplus of $402,000 is larger than originally anticipated. On the general fund expenditures, some expenditure changes that I wanted to highlight for you. The city clerk is not gonna have an election in 21-22, so you'll see their division expenses decreasing. Public administration includes $284,000 contributions towards tree expenditures. The $284,000 is your SB 1 or RMRA, maintenance of effort required by the state of California in order to receive the SB 1 money. This was not budgeted in last year's budget, so we have two years in this year's budget. So you'll see a significant increase in there. There's also an increase in public works grounds, adding $150,000 to contract services. And one of the large increases is tree trimming to get back on schedule to get the tree trimming done on cycle. And community service is increasing to bring back the crossing guards for the schools. Well, not the schools, but the streets by the schools. Now, I'm sorry. Now, the next three slides are the items to consider that the budget subcommittee wanted brought forward to the council. They're listed in the Agenda staff report toward the end, but they're also listed here. So, this really concludes my presentation, other than perhaps if you would like, we could go through each one of these items and get the city council's input. If you would like, we could scroll through these and briefly look at them. But ultimately, in the budget resolution, it would be nice if the city council could weigh in on each of these items individually. And if you give direction other than the way the budget is presented, we would have to adjust the budget. But if you give the direction, we can then just administratively make that happen, and you could adopt it today.
Okay, very good. Meaning these items, meaning as enumerated on page three, one through 10?
One through 10, yes, and some of them have subparts.
It's the same on this. Okay. All right, that sounds pretty good. Okay, before we do that, let me ask the council, do they have any general questions or questions that were not covered in the report before we go quickly through one through 10, just in case? Councilwoman Suarez?
I do have a general question. So we decided to put back into the budget the crosswalk, the crossguards, and then also, no, just that bit. So did we have to take from any other funds in order to fit that into the budget, or how did that work out?
Yeah, I'll respond to that. So when the council, I forget which meeting it was, it was, I believe, two meetings ago, when the council made the decision to include the crosswalks or reinstate the crosswalk program, at that point, and this was still with the preliminary budget, at that point, staff went back to take a look at the budget again and to see where items could be cut in order to make that difference. So at the time, adding the crosswalks, I'm sorry, the crossing guard program back into the budget would have amounted to us having about a $100,000 budget deficit. At that time, we went through the budget, we cut out various things, and we were able to provide the funding for the crossing guard program and cut out enough so that we would have a surplus of about $115,000. So that's where we stood with the preliminary budget prior to Mike coming on board. After Mike came on board and was able to look through the budget and perform his analysis, we were then able to revise our surplus estimate, and that's where we are today. So with the crossing guard program within the budget, we now have the surplus of about $400,000.
I'm just curious. So it was a various, it took a little bit here and there just to kind of make it work?
We did. So at the time, if at the time, after the council reinstated the crossing guard program, if we knew what we knew today, we would not have had a deficit. So at the time, we thought we had a deficit. And we cut things from the budget in order to then come up with a new surplus, again, which was about $115,000. Again, then when Mike came on board and did his work, we now have found that we have an actual surplus of about $400,000.
That makes sense. Thank you.
Any other general questions or clarifications before we kind of go down the list?
Kevin, why don't you tell the council where the cuts came from?
The cuts from where?
Yes.
Okay, gotcha.
Okay, I'm gonna try to remember if I can do it off the top of my head here. But the main item that was cut, which was about $100,000, was for the capital, I'm sorry, was for facilities assessment for city facilities. So that would have been an expenditure to allow us to assess our facilities, to see where each of them stood and what improvements might be needed, say, in three years' time, or five years' time, or 10 years' time, so that we could then plan ahead, you know, financially budget, in terms of our budget, to provide the funding that we needed for those improvements. But we needed to perform the study first to have that information, and that would have cost about $100,000. We did cut a few other things, but again, in total, it amounted to the amount we needed to fund the crossing guard program plus provide a surplus.
So let me ask you this, just a point of clarification. If that facility assessment was to the tune of $100,000, and there is a surplus of $400,000, is there a need to fund the facilities assessment, because it sounded like we still would have?
Yes.
Three hundred?
So we certainly could add that back at this point. Again, if we had the information that we have today, and the council wanted to add back the crossing guard program, we probably would not have had the need to cut anything because of the surplus. But we only did that based on the information we had at that time. So if the council would like to add that facility assessment study back into the budget, we could certainly do that considering the surplus that we have. However, we have plenty to do in the next fiscal year, and that study can still be held off. So if we put it back in, you know, it would just be additional work that we would have to do. Is it something that's crucial at this point? I would say no. It's something that we would like to do, something we would like to do this coming year, but considering all the other work that's already on the table, we don't need to do it.
Okay, thank you for that clarification.
Also, if I can think back on Kevin, we made cuts to, I believe, cable manager and something else in public works, too, I believe.
That was the public works item, facilities assessment. We also took half of the salary and benefits for our cable TV supervisor to fund the cuts. And the thinking there is that, first off, what I would like to do is just have that position frozen. Still keep it on the books, but have it frozen. And, you know, we don't have any plans at this point to hire for that position. But even if we were to do that, we probably wouldn't do that until the beginning of next year. So that's where the savings would come from, the fact that we wouldn't hire for at least six months. So we took savings from that position in order to fund the crossing guard program, again, based on information at that time.
Anything else, Mr. Mayor? Okay, any other points of clarification? Okay, I'm gonna suggest what we do, exactly what our consultant asked us to do, that we just kind of briefly go down the list, one through 10, so that they're clear on if we need to make any adjustments or if we agree on these items. There's a few items where the subcommittee wanted to hear from the, there's no recommendation, I should say, from the subcommittee. They wanted us to hear from the whole committee. So let's start with, we're not gonna describe these, it's already been described. Let's start with, like, item one, where it talks about the South Bay Council of Governments, $6,500 for a planning position. It is suggested that we exclude that. So the question would be? What are the thoughts of excluding this, this $6,500 expenditure to the South Bay Council of Governments for a planner?
I have some thoughts. So I'm not on the budget subcommittee, but I do agree with the suggestion. When I sat at the meetings, I wasn't quite clear what the position entailed and exactly what the, how it was going to benefit our city. And the other thing that caught me off guard was one of the cities told them they weren't gonna pay more than $1,000 a month for, or $1,000 for that, contribute to it. So it didn't quite make sense as to how it's gonna work, and I just thought we might hold off on that. I have a feeling that it sounded more to me not such a planning position, but more of an advocacy position. So that's what kind of confused me, so I'm okay with holding off on this.
Anyone else, any other thoughts on that?
When we sat down at the subcommittee, we weren't sure what the $6,500 was benefiting us for. That's why we decided to cut it off until we get more of a clear view of what we're gonna pay $6,500.
Okay. Anyone else?
Mr. Mayor, just for clarification, so the $6,500 is currently not in the budget. But we just wanted to bring this back for the council to consider.
So we would be adding this if we desire to have it?
Correct.
So at this point, it's not in the budget, so we won't be excluding it because it's not in the budget?
Right.
It would be as is, okay? You have anything else you want to add? Okay, and I'm okay with not including it in the budget as well. Figure if we need a planner, we should hire our own planner. Okay, let's go to item number two. It says that the city clerk, let me see, the committee wanted to understand about the software maintenance cost increase. Anybody wanna speak on that about this?
Thank you, honorable man of the city council. It's actually a, it's mislabeled there, sorry about that. It's actually software improvements and add-ons. It's a piggyback to our new Office 365 suite to add on new kind of automation and other types of software that assist in backend processes such as contract processing, records management, channel workflow, and digital signature capture.
Okay, point of clarification, this is already in the budget, or would we be adding this if we desired to do so?
Yes, but we weren't sure because we were presented with $1,000 on the first draft, and the second draft is showing $2,000. So we wanna make sure, is it $1,000 or is it $2,000?
Okay, I'm hearing that it's $2,000, but my question is, is it already included in the budget, or are we gonna add this if we desire to have it?
No, it's included.
It's in the proposed budget.
The $2,000 is in the budget right now.
So unless we have objections, then there's nothing to do on it because it's already included in the budget, but you wanted to point it out to us. Anyone have any thoughts on excluding this from the budget? Okay, I don't see anyone wishing to exclude it from the budget, so it will stand. Okay, and item three is the committee also wanted the council to decide whether to exclude $4,000 for a communications consultant. Who can talk to me about this $4,000 consultant? Which means if it says, well, it says include or exclude. Right now, it's included. Correct?
Correct.
So the action would be either to keep it in or to exclude it. Anyone have any thoughts on that?
I have a few thoughts on it.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm in favor of having the communications consulted. I think that we have some big things getting ready to happen in the city with the metro issue in front of us. The communication to our residents, I think, is vital. I also feel like Michael Reyes and I really, and Kevin, are all on the same page about getting... are all on the same page about getting Neighborhood Watch back in force. I think in order to do that decently, communication needs to be better with not only our residents, but also with our property owners on that issue. And that also plays into the firework suppression issue. It's better communication there as well. I also feel like the Landalian probably needs to be looked at and decided if we are hitting the right things in our publication. And I think all of those things would be a reasonable, I, I don't know if next year I'll feel this way, but I think we could use some help in the communications department since currently it feels like it falls on several people's heads that are already, we're asking them to do other jobs as well. That's it.
Okay, thank you, Councilwoman. Are there any other thoughts on the communications? Councilwoman Suarez?
Yeah, I have some mixed thoughts on this one just because I've worked with some communications consultants in the past, and it's one of those where I feel like the way it's stated is awfully broad. I mean, you know, if we're talking about general announcements, it's a little different than, you know, like crisis management. You know, if we're dealing with metro and there's things that we don't agree, obviously, we're gonna kind of try and communicate the way that we think it's best for the residents and not necessarily how Metro is going to, you know, put it out there. So I have some mixed feelings on this. Definitely would wanna see the requirements for the company if we were to hire one, put it on, put, see the, put out an RFP for it and just kind of see what they have to offer. Something that we can, that's tangible, we can see that they're actually worth the money that we're spending on it.
I think all of that is reasonable.
The subcommittee?
Yes.
I'm sure I both agreed about doing a RFP on this item. Because it's forty thousand dollars, so I'm going to say the manager agreed to that?
Yeah, absolutely. So if the council decides to include this with the budget, this would be a new program. And obviously, it would involve a consultant, so yes, we would go through our normal process with an RFP. But I just wanted to provide some more information, and maybe this clarifies a little bit. But my, my thinking in terms of what the consultant could help the city with are things like just general communications with the public, enhancing our social media presence, taking a look at revisiting the Landalian, the design and how it's produced, website content production, city branding and promotions, crisis communications, and as you mentioned, Councilmember Hoffman-Gorman, communications with our community regarding the Green Line because that is such a significant project coming forward. So those are just, you know, several things that the communication consultant could help us with. But along the way, I'm sure there will be other things that we could, you know, identify as, as needs for, for the city. So those are just, you know, things that I could come up with right away.
Okay, thank you, Mr. City Manager. And I, I also agree that we should keep this item in the, in the budget. And I would like to see that it's focused on, all the items that was enumerated, but specifically on the Green Line and communications and branding. And obviously, crisis, you know, issues as well should be communicated. So I agree. So it sounds like we have a consensus on item number three. Let's move to four, four A. This one has to do with the ten thousand dollars for an executive leadership training, whether or not to include or exclude this item. Anyone wants to talk about this?
You have that for the side on page twenty-five of the budget line.
Oh, yeah, I read it in the budget, but I'm just going down the list here. Anyone wants to, wants to speak on this item? Seeing if it's, you wanna speak on it?
Yeah.
Okay. Mayor Proton?
Four A. It's a central management team leadership training, ten thousand dollars citywide development and monetary, citywide training and harassment pension. My thought, I believe Shirley's thought was, they have the California cities that puts this on, this information, these conferences on, these little sidebars on, and it's free. California contract cities, they put it on, they have little seminars, they put it on free. The JPIA also puts it on free. So why are you spending ten thousand dollars when they can do this stuff for free? Well, twelve thousand.
Okay, anyone else have any thoughts on that, that item?
My only question is, is, are department heads also allowed to attend at contract cities for that kind of training?
That I don't know.
Okay, so that's, what about?
But you can do it online too. You can do it online. JPIA has a lot of things online, if I'm not mistaken. Maybe the state attorney can answer that.
Well. JPIA, yeah, contract cities, I don't know.
Yeah, there are a lot of, there are a lot of resources available online. And some are free, some are not. There are also regular conferences. Again, some are available at reduced costs, some are specialized. In the case of this executive leadership training, I'm not exactly sure what it entails. So I don't know whether it would be replicated by the league or the contract cities. And so I would have to defer to your conversation with the city manager about what exactly this is looking at here and whether you feel that it's worth the money or not.
So if it's the executive leadership training, that's a program, who, that's a program of which agency?
So this initiative was something that came out of the process that started last year. The council might recall that we had a consultant come out to help us with some various personnel-related issues. The consultant, his name was Jeff Bills. He recommended that, based on the situation here with the organization, that there be executive leadership training, which could help the city staff, specifically central management team, with team-building type exercises as well as executive leadership training itself. So, but to get back to the point that was made earlier, there are certainly resources available by other agencies that provide training. However, this training would be specialized and it would be tailored specifically for our staff and our situation here to help us with team-building and again, with management training. So it's, it's not just general training that could be, it's not the type of training that would be used, you know, for different organizations. This would be specialized.
Okay.
And geared towards.
Okay, I understand it now. Yes, ma'am.
And if I'm to understand it right, it, that is included in our budget already?
Correct.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, any other thoughts on this item? I'm okay with, since it's already included in the budget, unless there's a desire to remove it, it will stand. So that's item A. Item B, let's see, this is a contract services, a request for the full council, whether or not thirty thousand for recruitment costs for the finance director position. Okay, this is for a finance director position, recruitment funding of thirty thousand. This is already included in the budget?
Correct.
This, actually, this one is not included in the budget.
So this one, we would have to add to the budget if we so desire. Any thoughts on this item, item B?
So is this like advertisement in the different magazines?
No, we would do that, we would do that as a matter of course anyways. However, this would be to hire a recruiting firm to help us with finding employees out there that might be interested in applying for this position. I'll just say a little bit about this. So for finance director positions within our industry, as I understand it, it's, there's, there's not a lot of people out there that, that are applying for these type of positions. There is a shortage, if you will, of finance directors. And considering that, it would be a difficult recruitment for us if we were to just do it in-house. Having a professional help us with this would be very helpful because they are, you know, in this industry. They are working with other cities who are also recruiting for finance directors. And, you know, there could be a situation where multiple people are applying for a finance director position in another city. Perhaps, you know, they don't get that position, but they're still out there in the market. So these recruiting firms know of these folks and could help us with getting them to possibly apply for, for these positions, for this position. So it, similar to the experience we had last year with our public works director position, we went through, I believe it was, two to three failed recruitments because of the difficulty in recruiting for that position. But once we were able to, once the council gave us approval to hire a recruiting firm to help us with this, you know, I mean, we weren't able to hire for that position. So it, it has helpful, it is helpful and it has been beneficial for us in the past.
Okay, any other thoughts?
I had a question. And maybe Raylet can help with this one. The last time that we recruited for finance director, did we use a firm or we just did it internally?
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. The last recruitment was done internally for the finance director.
So do we anticipate there is more challenging times? And times have made it more challenging to do it in-house?
That's my understanding, my understanding that it is a challenging time right now for filling finance director positions. You know, we haven't gone through it, so I can't tell you firsthand, but that is my understanding. But finance director, you know, it's a very technical position, much like a director of public works position is. So, you know, looking at those positions, very technical, highly technical positions, like I said, we did have some, I don't wanna say problem, but we did, it wasn't easy for us with the public works director. And we did have a couple, if not three failed recruitments, which, you know, cost us time and energy to bring on that position. So rather than, you know, go that route again, the request is to hire a recruiting firm.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
What guarantee does the recruiter, what guarantee does the recruiter give us? Is there a, if it doesn't work out with whoever we hire within six months, do we get a free listing or are they guaranteeing us something?
You know, I, maybe Raylet, if you can help with this as well, but I believe there is something like that. I don't recall, maybe Raylet has a better memory or understanding of this, but I have heard of situations like that where the recruiting firm then came back and provided assistance with, you know, another recruitment. But Raylet maybe has better information.
It really depends on the contract and the firm that we actually choose. For the public works director, the first round with the firm that we used, it was unsuccessful, so they actually did the recruitment again. So those, there are some guarantees to bring in at a firm where they will be able to guarantee a hire. And if they don't, they will do the recruitment until there is a selection.
I think this clarification, she was speaking of councilwoman not hiring, but the satisfaction level after we hired the person. You know, what you're saying if the person doesn't work out?
Right, if we have to let them go in six months because their performance is not to what we were looking for. Is there like a guarantee for the first three months if you don't like them or six months?
It will still depend on the consulting firm. I have seen agreements where they will guarantee or do the recruitment if after six months, that person doesn't work out. So there is a possibility for that. It really depends on the firm.
And one more question. Do we go, do we do an RFP first through the firm or do we have a set firm that does it?
I think we, I think we talked about this, and we can do an RFP. There are firms that we have, based on our last RFP, that we know that can do the work for us, but we would probably go out for RFP again.
Well, what I've done in the past is I would do informal proposals. So I do have a list of firms that can perform this work, and I would typically reach out to them and ask for a proposal informally.
Okay, thank, thank you for that. Yes, yes, ma'am.
And this, thirty thousand dollars is a one-time spend? Or is it guaranteed we have something in place and then the contract expires?
It's a one-time expense, so however period of time it takes them to find the person, that's what we pay. We wouldn't have to pay anything additional.
All right, thank you.
Yep.
I just had, I guess, my thoughts on it because I feel like the, the two positions, I feel like in the past, we haven't had the same issues with hiring finance directors as we did with Public Works. From what I remember, Public Works was kind of an ongoing issue of not being able to find someone. And I would prefer if we just kind of put it out ourselves. And then if that doesn't hit, then look at doing the consulting.
So we can always allocate the expenditure in the budget subject to, as you enumerated, our councilwoman putting it out first. And once we have exhausted all of our, you know,
Outlets?
Our routes, and it doesn't prove successful, then we can, the expenditure would already be approved so that we can then go out to bid for a request for proposal. We can always do that. That's a good idea. Yes, ma'am.
Being the new kid on the block, I'd just like to look at my other three more experienced council people because you have had experience in this predicament. I would be open to what Bernadette is saying as far as putting it out ourselves first, and if that fails, then moving ahead with this, but trying it on our own.
Would you be comfortable going ourselves with our outlets and then me and Jerry put this on if we need to?
Well, I think we should allocate it in the budget so there's, it's seamless. So we have our period of time in which we put it out there ourselves to try to recruit, you know, in-house. And if it's not successful, we don't have to wait for some type of approval or to bring it back, whatever. It would satisfy the same thing because then we still would have to exhaust, you know, all means, you know, necessary as the councilwoman Bernadette suggested.
And that's perfectly fine. We can, we can certainly do it on our own. At this point, we haven't done anything, just to let the council know. We haven't done anything at this point because we were waiting to see if the council would fund this as part of this budget. But we can certainly start right away and advertise for, for the position. And we'll see how it goes. Maybe we get somebody. If we don't, then it would be appreciated if this was in the budget so that we could move forward. And of course, I would report back to the council and let you know about how the recruitment went. And, you know, if it's successful, then fine. If not, then I would then ask if we could use the funds to hire the firm.
Okay, very, very good. So without objection, we'll include item B, or we'll add item B, I should say, for B in the budget for thirty thousand dollars for finance, finance director position pending, if we're unsuccessful in recruiting in-house.
Sure.
Okay, okay, let's move on to item five. Let's see. Yeah, let's move on to item five.
And you'll find that on page forty-seven.
And that's on page forty-seven, for those who are looking for the page. Item five is public works administration, proxy administration funding that was omitted. I assume that it's, it's in the, well, I don't assume, I'm sorry, it's in the current budget. They wanted to point that out to us. It was two hundred and thirty-seven thousand. It was $237,751. So the issue was whether I want to keep that in the budget. Anybody want to speak on that one?
Mike, could you explain why we added this as a agenda number? Because we do have a deficit, right? No, wait. What, what minus on Prop C?
Yes, yes. There is a deficit in Prop C. The original schedule that I had chose, showed that there was a $960,000 surplus in Prop C. But once we ran all the numbers through, including the carryovers, it became negative 260 or 270,000 dollars. And this would add to that deficit. But I believe this is like 65%. There, there are three people, I believe, including 65% of your public works director. So if you choose not to add it, that could be problematic. But, um, this is the way. I got it when I got to the spreadsheet and we didn't notice until after. I found a couple of instances of this and we had fixed those. This one didn't get caught until we were in the meeting with the budget subcommittee. And so that's where, um, the public works director showed the salary schedule that were on a breakdown that he had gotten from a preliminary worksheet that hadn't been yet updated to the public works spreadsheet. And so that's where we get the, uh, suggestion to add the 237, 751. And the one below that talks about why we're, how we're going to solve the budget deficit in Prop C, assuming you add this back to the budget.
So if we add it back to the budget, how does, what do we stand with our proposed balance and surplus of 4,002?
Well, if we don't add it to the budget, we don't have a director.
Well, yeah, yeah, I understand that, but, but there's still a monetary question answered as well.
Yes. The 237,000 is salary and benefits and it's not of all of your public works director. It's part of his salary, but it's also part of two other people's salaries as well, as far as I, as I recall. So it would be difficult to not add it back, but council member Curtis makes a very good point that if you look at the budget summary, you're already 270,000 dollar in the hole on Prop C if all the projects get done. So when you add this 237,000, that puts you to approximately 505,000, I think it was 503,000 dollar deficit. To remedy that, we spoke with public works director, we can remove 600,000 dollars from the Redondo Beach Boulevard project that is funded by Prop C. And that way you avoid overspending Prop C. Then we'll make, make those two changes, Prop C will end with a positive balance.
Mr. Mayor? I, I think I understood your question.
Yes, I'm at 165.
Yes, what, what, uh, Mr. Matsumoto was referring to is there is a bit of an accounting issue with Prop C. And so that is essentially grant funds. What you're referring to, I think, is our general fund and our surplus. And this would not affect that.
Okay, so there, there you go.
We would, we would still have the 400,000.
So, so it wouldn't go down to 165 because since it's grant, it wouldn't affect that budget surplus, which is projected surplus, which is 402,000.
Yes, yes. This would not change the general fund surplus.
Okay, very good. That's what I wanted to. And mind you, some of this stuff I want to spell out because sometimes people watching and they're, they don't do this every day. And so it might be a little difficult to, to follow the, the bouncing ball or whatever and not realize that Prop C, they might not even know what Prop C is, that it's a grant funding or whatever. And sometimes we even have to be reminded and, and, because if it was general fund, obviously it would come from this 402, you know, balance, you know, and that would be a whole different discussion. Thank you for that clarification. Anyone else?
Can I just ask, and I'd like to know from Julian, does it seem reasonable that the budget for the Redondo Beach Boulevard can be cut by 600,000?
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. Um, the only thing that we just have to do is we just have to schedule the project to start at a later time and then we could budget the remaining for the next, for the fiscal year 22, 23 budget.
Thank you.
Thank you.
If, if I could just piggyback on, on those comments. So there is a, a lot of balls in the air, if you will, with, um, regard to our funding and with this project. So this is one way, as Julian explained, this is one way that we could, um, you know, not have this deficit with our Prop C funds. However, um, we are still, um, hopeful that we will get some money back from Metro for, um, Prop C funds that we lost some time ago. So if we were to receive those funds, that could then be used for this project to make it whole. In addition to that, um, as I mentioned to you a couple of weeks back now, um, there is a potential that we will receive a million dollars through the federal government, um, through Maxine Waters' office. If we were to receive that money, again, that could provide an infusion for this project, which could make it whole. And then in addition to that, um, maybe, Mr. Mayor, if you'd like to share some information that you've received today?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, there's also a potential, very good potential, that we will also receive $2 million from the, the state budget, um, for local street project, um, which could be used for, um, Redondo Beach Boulevard, um, project as well. That's looking very, very promising.
So at this point, um...
Oh, I should say that's from Assemblywoman Adam Burke. She put in a, um, a line item earmarked for the city of Longdale.
So at this point, this is just our way of balancing the Prop C budget, um, without any of that additional funding coming in.
Okay, so we kind of did A and B.
I have a question over here.
Okay, which, which one?
I'm gonna put you on the spotlight. In our first, first budget book, we have the salaries for the Prop C funding 207-310 in the book that a former finance director did. The new book, the numbers are missing. Did we reach out to the former finance director to ask her some input or did you just shoot and blind?
No, I, I did not.
And there is a little blank, you didn't?
Well, I saw that there were a number of areas that were blanks and, uh, I thought, I, I did approach, uh, the city manager with, with these problems, including the fact that some things didn't balance and some things didn't flow forward. It looked to me as if some work had been done, it just hadn't been completed. So I'm confident, since, uh, the public works director and you both had preliminary schedules that had those, it just hadn't been updated in the, the finance drive where the accountant was aware of them. And so I was working with those schedules and trying to piece together as much as I could find. I did not reach out to the former director of finance.
It seems to be, if it's me, and I have questions, and she was employed until the 17th of June as a senior employee, I would reach out to her and said, you know, what's happened to A, B, and C? And she could maybe give you some insight. That's just my self thoughts. She still was employed here, so I understand why we didn't reach out to her.
Okay, thank, thank you, uh, Mr. Pro, Pro Tem, Mayor Pro Tem. So we did item A. I think we concluded that, yes, we want to have the, uh, to add the 237. So now we're at, at B and we kind of mentioned B as well. And I think we concluded that we're okay with B. The committee recommends, you know, reducing the budget, reducing the budget for the Redondo Beach Boulevard. So we're okay with B as well, right? Okay. Okay, so that would be the order, A and B. Let's move on to item six. Item six involves, they want to know why the budget was 37,000, but detail only showed 28. Do we want to talk about this community development division? I don't know how this means, um, infund, basically professional services. It was 37,000 and now it shows only 28,000.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, councilmembers. Thank you for the question. So this item covers, we anticipated, actually, the two other departments, MSD and Public Works participate in the City View program. Previous to Ms. Pendleton's departure, we were going to segregate that out separately. Um, but meeting with the new finance consultant, we went ahead and just, well, just parlayed it out later on down in the budget. So that covers the City View contract with anticipated increase of 5% as well as a, uh, the dispute resolution, which, you know, we were looking at, at moving back into MSD because it's real related to MSD dispute resolution and code enforcement matters. But, uh, we, since that time and now, the new finance consultant, I will just keep it in our budget. So that's why it was different.
Okay. Any questions on, on that item? Item six?
I, I do.
Yes, ma'am.
So Sean, what's the cost? Because we still show the 17,000 and the 11,000 on our, on our books, but we're budgeting for 37, so...
Yeah, so the total is 22,410 for City View and then for dis, and for dispute resolution is, I'm sorry, dispute resolution is 13,794.
Thank you.
This is the first time I've ever sat up here before in six years. I'm, uh, I'm the dice.
Don't worry, I just discovered that I can turn the lecturing up or down, including mute. I just realized there's a mute button here for the lecture. Very good. Okay, any, any other thoughts on, on this item? Okay, thank you, sir. Thank you for that report. Let's move on to item, that was item six. Okay, seven. Yeah. Okay, let's, let's do eight, let's do, um, seven. This is professional services too. No, no, no. Yeah, this is professional services. I want to know. Okay, the committee wanted to know the amount of increase from the budget from 5,000 to 16,000. Okay. That's a different, okay.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council. So this one's a little bit more complicated. As the council knows, we do the community development block grant for, and we minister it for public works and C, uh, community services department. We have an allocation roughly around 300, 200 to 300,000 for roads and 65,000 annually for senior activities. Last year, community development was able to obtain additional funding for COVID relief for senior activities for CSD. And those costs are reflected based on the year that we received the grant. So last year, we got the grant roughly 194 and the cost is, uh, was about 5,000 to administer. Now that, that we have the entire amount for the entire fiscal year, roughly, it may not be spent, I talked to a consultant today, it'd be roughly around 16,000 for the whole year to administer the senior activities COVID funding. This is on top of the senior activities that we get, the 65,000. So this is additional cost. And it's all been calculated in the recently approved contract we do with, uh, Michael Baker Incorporated that you approved a few weeks ago.
Okay, very good.
Any discussion on this item? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. Community Development Director. Okay, that's seven. Number, um, eight is community services. Again, this is, um, regarding Prop A, full-time salaries and benefits was inadvertently omitted. The budget committee recommended that 155,000 be added to match the 2021 amended budget. Okay. All right. What do we need to know about this one? 194?
94.
94. Okay. What do we need to know about this item?
This one was not, not included.
In the first book, it was, in the second book, it's not.
Okay.
And then it's not affecting our, our general funds.
Okay. All right. So do we have a consensus to, to include that? Okay. All right, doesn't get paid, okay.
So Julian's working for free and Mike Casti is working for free.
Take that under consideration. See like we have a consent, consensus to keep that item in there? Okay. So that's item eight, A. Let's move to B. The committee recommended limits of staffing the five part-time employees. Uh, let's hear about this one. It says summer day camp in the travel club program. This is B. Not about the program, but about the item. What, what are we deciding on this item?
Yeah, this would be for, good evening, Mayor and City Councilmembers. This would be for summer day camp in 2021, 22, obviously. We're too late to get that going right now, but our ratio is typically five employees to 10, uh, five, one employee to 10 participants. So that's generally where the, where the five comes from. Uh, travel club, discussions regarding travel club have been regarding not providing a chaperone. You know, in the past, we used to provide a chaperone to go on trips. Uh, that has been decided between the club and internally that that probably doesn't need to happen anymore. It's a waste of staff hours, depending on what level the sta, the travel club does come back in 21, 22. The budget for that, I believe, was 10,000.
Okay. Anyone wants to speak on this item? The recommendation is for five part-time employees. I take it that there was a different recommendation? I'm not sure, but it says recommendation.
In the first book, there was a larger number and we recommended five. And the travel club, there's always been, since I was a senior rec.
Yeah.
A senior rec on the overnight trips. And there was omitted in this, and I think we should bring that back. He or she only works the trips.
Yeah, it's generally, yeah, it's generally, uh...
We could use that individual and other parts of the city to...
We could double up, yes.
Okay. So that individual that would go on the trip would be included in this five part-time employees? Okay.
And, and we, we never really had a, a person dedicated to the travel club. That's generally how it's worked in the past.
We had the gentleman, but I can't remember her name.
Yeah.
Who wants to speak on this item? Yes, ma'am?
I would just like to suggest that when we talk about the travel club, is there any way that we can separate the days of enrollment so that the Longdale resident gets first shot at those trips?
People I've got many years ago, like, didn't wait.
Yeah, I'm sorry, can you repeat the question?
Currently, uh, what I am hearing out in the neighborhood is the frustration that non-Londell residents get a, a better shot at, because they come in at four o'clock in the morning or five o'clock in the morning to stand in line. Is there any way that we can change that system to where, say, the Longdale residents get to register at this time? And then if we have openings, then the other participants, our non-Londell residents can come in?
That's been discussed over the years a number of times. Uh, we've been trying to convince the travel club that it would benefit our residents more, uh, i- if we had that priority-type registration. The travel club, uh, with different presidents over the years have had different stances on that. Uh, they've been semi-resistant to that in the past. The last time we took a crack on that, maybe two years ago before the pandemic. Uh, i- it certainly is not a great situation having anybody waiting out in front of City Hall in the cold that early in the morning.
Right. And, but I, as the body that funds this, I am, I want the Longdale resident on the bus before I want the non-resident on the bus.
Yes.
Madam, uh, City Councilmember, very good idea. Not really part of our budget discussion tonight, but thank you for raising it in connection with the budget item. And I, I believe we, uh, I can speak to the city manager and the director. We understand where you are and we'll, um, either take action on our own or bring something back to the council when we can...
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, so it sounds like we may have a consensus on item B concerning the summer camp and travel club, five part-time employees. See a consensus there? Okay, so that would be the order for B. Five under that same heading is, um, is for security guard. Let's see, the...
Page ninety-six, new.
Page ninety-six in your books. The committee did not make a recommendation one way or the other. Okay. So there is no recommendations for security guards. So I would imagine if, since there was no recommendation, that it's not currently in...
It is actually in your budget.
It's in the budget, yes.
You put it in the budget, although there's no recommendation one way or the other. I like how they put that, or the other.
Next one? Ninety-six. Okay, I'm actually, right on the mic. How many, has a community damage graffiti broken into the last year pandemic?
You know, we've seen an uptick in homeless individuals staying the night on the terrace. We've seen this in the daytime. You know, we do our best to run them out, we call the sheriffs, we get help there, but, you know, with Proposition forty-seven and all that, it's really tricky. They seem to, most of the time, run them out and then they return. There are a lot more daytime incidents now, just people just hanging out on the terrace and they don't want to leave. They figure, hey, we're closed, so why can't we be here? The last time we took a stab at the security guard company, we went on very limited hours. It was, I believe, twenty-eight hours a week, and I believe the budget was twenty-six thousand. That wasn't enough because we didn't include weekends. You know, when we get to talk about the facility reservation deal, when we're coming back with that eventually, you know, we would use a different security company for that, possibly. But we're looking at expanding hours. You know, before, we had limited hours, three to eight, Monday through Thursday. I think it was eleven to four on Fridays, but we had no weekend coverage. And weekend coverage is probably what we need, just as much as the weekday coverage, the evening coverage, because, you know, in the evenings, we got all kinds of parents and people coming in. And the security guard that we did have did an adequate job. The company wasn't the greatest company, I will admit, because we went with the low bid. But I think, I think this is an item that's protective, protection for the community, protection for staff. And I do know that when we did have a security guard in place, he did a great job with the homeless situation. He was able to communicate with them and run them out in most cases. But I'm not going to go so far as to suggest overnight security, because I don't think we have the funds for that. But the homeless know we close at eight, they move in at eight-thirty or nine, they know we come in at seven, they move out at five-thirty or six most of the time. And, yeah, we do have isolated incidents of graffiti, other things that I don't want to describe right now, you know, that are happening on the terrace. Yeah.
But my understanding, we're supposed to have sheriff patrols there quite often, because the update we get, they say they patrol City Hall, the community center. We got to find out if they're getting out of the cars, but anyway, I have a problem spending forty-five thousand dollars if we don't need it because we didn't have it during that pandemic, and just a few cases you said.
Yeah.
Doesn't worth forty-five, and the security, you're being nice about the security team we had last year. They were worth the salt of gold.
Yeah, he's been very nice.
We had old guy, he couldn't catch a cold.
Yeah.
That was a waste of money last twenty, twenty-one, nineteen, or, I don't know, that's my opinion.
And what I did, projected the budget on is, last time I mentioned we went with low bid, it was, I think it was sixteen ninety-five an hour. You know, and most other security guards were in the twenty to twenty-five range. We had some that were just absolutely outrageous, but I kind of figure for a really solid company, it'd probably settle in at maybe twenty to twenty-five hours. And, but this, this coverage will include some weekend coverage. The other inexpensive thought that I had is, you know, maybe a ghost car in front of the community center would work, because the thing about the ghost cars, most people know that nobody's in there, but they don't know until they get there and they drive up and they look. They don't know if somebody's in the community center and coming out. A lot of other cities do that as well. You know, there's just the unknown. People slow down, they watch, they look, and they don't want to take the chance. It is, it is a deterrent. That's another low-cost thing that we could do, and, you know, I think we have a good relationship with LASD, at least my department does, but the patrols are not enough. They really aren't.
Who else wants to speak on that? Quavis?
I do like the ghost car thing, but if you have the same car there, people know it's a ghost car, so it's not gonna, it'll work maybe for a month, but not more than that. As far as the guards, if we're not happy with the guards, we're able to ask for those guards to be switched, correct?
Yes, yes.
And I know we are supposed to pick the least expensive, but why did we go with, why didn't we go up a notch on security guard if the first one didn't work, the first company? Do you know?
We did have a second guard occasionally, filling in for Eric, who was the main guy. You know, it was a very short contract, we didn't really have security that long, and we just kind of thought that the company overall was not what we expected it to be. So it was more so about the company as it was an individual guard, but, you know, when it's that way at the top, it's usually that way all the way down.
I do think we do need a security guard during the time that the kids are going to their classes in the community center. Especially nowadays, we don't know who's on the streets. We could probably test it, do a one-year contract and see if they work. And if it doesn't, then, you know, we could try another method of safety or security.
Councilmember Quavis, that was the situation with our last vendor. I can't remember when that vendor was hired, but it was sometime early in the twenty-twenty year. And then following June, then we didn't include that in the next budget for the current year. So, yes, we could certainly do that. We can take a look and see how this vendor works. If it doesn't work out, we could go with a different one, if that's what the council wants to do. But I also wanted to just bring up, for clarification, that in addition to the community center, it would also be for in and around City Hall as well. For, you know, sometimes we do get minors that are skateboarding and causing some amount of vandalism, so it would be for that purpose as well.
And one last question, who would be supervising them? Is there, is it Mike's department, or do, does the sheriff supervise them? How does that work?
Yeah, it would be a contract under Community Services Department, so it would be supervised by Mike.
And, you know, if the city council desires to do it that way and expand the zone, like, for example, Mr. Chen did mention accurately that they would patrol the entire outside of the community, the civic center, they would go between the library, they would hit this parking lot, they would hit that parking lot. Never really go too much towards the library, because that wasn't our property, but if we wanted to, we could centralize the contract to make it community center only. The other thing where, the other element where security is important is monitoring traffic coming in and out of the community center. Before, it was pretty much anybody that wanted to come in can come in. You know, I don't know how much that will change, and if it's related to the pandemic or not, but that's another big deal. You know, we'd like to have more time for that individual inside the community center and monitoring traffic that comes in and out. So if there's a thought that it could be a more functional contract by excluding the civic center, that's another option, too. So.
You got something, right? I thought you had something.
No.
Okay, all right, I was calling, okay. Yeah, I was just going to add on the security guard, just touching on that last, the last company we had, it took me about two months to realize the gentleman who was, and I call it, hanging around at the community center was the actual security guard. So that tells you how much the place was secured, if I thought he was just hanging around, you know, hanging out. Then I realized, oh, we got a security guard? And then that was he. So hopefully, this, the next security company will be a little better, I should say. Although the kids that were skating, they seemed to like him, because every once in a while, after he observed them skating for about an hour or so, he'll decide to break them up. Whatever, right? But I did notice that one time.
Yeah, I think, I think staff around City Hall saw him, saw him just as much as I did. We can certainly manage that better as well.
So did we say this was forty-seven?
Forty-five.
Forty-five?
Yeah, forty-five thousand.
Yeah, I do, I do kind of agree that we do need some level of security, if nothing else is a deterrent in to allow people to feel, especially when the kids return back to the community center, the children, as to say, return back to the community center for their events. And the seniors, if it's, you know, especially towards the evening or what have you, and and then also is the deterrent for, unfortunately for the homeless, to not take up, you know, opportunities up there. It's one thing if you're, just like everyone else, have opportunity to, you know, to rest, you know, or to enjoy the benches or what have you. It's another thing to take up residence, if you will, for the whole day, not enjoying, not allowing anyone else to enjoy the opportunity. And I think the security guard will be worth having to dissuade that. So I'm in favor of having a security service.
And if I could add one more thing, Mr. Mayor, forty-five thousand dollars, I know it sounds relatively high, but I think we can get some relief there. Always want to shoot high and come down lower if we can, but I do think when we get this company in place, we can double them as security for reservations in the community center, which will be paid for by the reservationists. So I really think we can get some relief on that forty-five thousand, and it likely will be lower.
Okay. Thank you, thank you for that clarification. It sounded like we have a consensus to have security service.
One question from Mike, make sure they add the whole community center and City Hall and the parking lot, build into the contract.
Yeah.
Because like Robert said, I've combined, the guy's bringing his car, he doesn't. That's great security.
Yeah.
That's funny.
I wish you'd have told me that.
Okay. Thank you, sir, for that report. Okay, let's move on to item nine. Special events, music festival. Let's see, what are you guys looking for here? The committee did not make a recommendation one way or the other.
No, we did.
Okay, all right. Well, this recommendation's just in. So what is the recommendation?
Ninety-nine.
Okay, so what is the recommendation?
We would like to see if the Parks and Recs or PRSSC could take over the Blues Music Festival like they did in the past. I believe the past two, two years, it was decided that city council or we would take it out of our funds, but we would like to see it come out of the PRSSC funds.
Okay. I don't know if we need any discussion, but let's, let's see. Anyone have any discussion on this item? I think it's pretty cut and dry what they like to do. I'm okay with the, and I would definitely would suggest that the Parks and Recreation Funds be used for the Blues Festival. In the time passed, the city, if it wanted, was new, and two, so that, you know, the cost was kind of unknown, or it was larger than their budget or what have you, but, I mean, they got some good funds over there, and that's exactly what those funds are, you know, are for, for these types of activity. Anybody else have anything on it?
Pat, anything?
Okay, it sounded like we have a consensus to, so how would this reflect on the budget? If the, is this, is this a saving to the general fund budget? Obviously, in terms of we don't have to spend it, yeah.
Yes, it'd be a ninety-five hundred dollar savings, and we do use that money each and every year.
Okay, all right. Okay, so that withstands, as is, so we'll let the Park and Recreation Social Services Commission funds pay for the Blues Festival. Okay, the next item and the last item is ten. This is SB one funding. It's projected to have a deficit of ninety-five thousand. The total of go, the committee did not discuss this item, but the city could delay some of the projects until a significant funding becomes available. Okay, who wants to discuss this item?
Did you want to?
How about Mr. Lee?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Last Monday, we approved the list of the SB one projects for this year, so instead of reducing or taking out the location of the project, I would recommend the same thing that I would do with the Redondo Beach Boulevard, to start this project probably earlier next year, so that we could use year twenty-two, twenty-three fund to cover the ninety thousand dollars.
Okay. Any discussion on that proposal? Any discussion on that? I agree with it. It sounded like we have a consensus to do such as outlined by the Public Works Director. Okay, it sounded like we have consensus. Okay, so we have went through all of the proposed recommendations.
Mr. Mayor, I have one that to add on to that.
Okay, any add, let's take that one. Number eleven, let's take that.
And Mr. Reyes, you want to step up front here, please? It is the, it's on ninety-nine still.
Nine-nine.
National Night Out. It was an increase of almost three thousand dollars. Can you explain to the council why?
The three thousand dollars, what was that on, sir?
Well, the old budget, well, twenty-twenty-one was fifteen-twenty, and new budget's forty-five hundred dollars. Can you explain why there's a three thousand dollars?
Yes, we were adding some events to mirror National Night Out with law enforcement. We were going to do seasonal events with law enforcement to have community events, and so that's going to pay for taco nights and things for the community to attend with sheriffs.
But it was National Night Out, and we have neighborhood watch after the sheriffs too, correct?
Correct, correct. Those items, typically, if we're having monthly neighborhood watch meetings, we go to different block captains' homes, and we typically have refreshments for all the attendees. So twelve hundred dollars roughly would be what we anticipate for...
Take your back there.
Oh, absolutely.
Thank you.
Thanks, sir, absolutely. Good evening, Mr. Councilman.
I don't know if the council has any questions, but if you guys want to add anything.
Yeah, I'm just, yeah, I'm just wondering why the, now that you mention it, because usually, I mean, I do go to a number of National Night Out, and they're usually pretty modest events. Pretty much with just, you know, the police come out, maybe some hot dogs involved, but, you know, it's pretty modest events, and so that is kind of a lot. It seemed like it's, it sounded like it's growing, which, if it grows too much, then it could end up being one of those things where, I've been to some communities where it's, it's an opportunity to get out, but it has nothing to do with endearing the law enforcement to the community, which is really what National Night Out is supposed to be about.
Correct, correct.
It becomes one of those things where, well, I'm out with my friends and, you know, and we're having a good time, and, you know, we're bonding, but it's so huge, it kind of loses it, it's, I guess, desired effect, desire, which was supposed to be, you know, for law enforcement and community. That's the only thing I would kind of contest against.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we certainly want National Night Out to be a significant and positive event for the community. We actually could reduce that budget to fifteen hundred dollars of what it was previously. If you look at the next page, on page one hundred, under public safety outreach, we did put some money in there for additional public safety events. So there may have been some, you know, information that was maybe not coordinated well through this whole process, so it might have just amounted to a mix-up. So we do have two items, so the National Night Out plus the public safety outreach, and fifteen hundred dollars or two thousand dollars would be sufficient for National Night Out.
I think this...
I also have a comment to make.
Yes, ma'am?
I know we, I've asked in the past, but if it's possible to ask maybe local businesses or companies if they can donate to put it on and kind of do, kind of, you know, sponsor maybe a table. I feel like a few companies might have done that at the last event we had.
We had some companies that donated food and drinks and refreshments, not actual cash, but we could pursue that. Last year, obviously, we didn't get to have a National Night Out, so we sort of lost contact with a lot of the groups, but this week, I'll be going to all the fireworks stands and re-inviting them to this year's National Night Out. We do have plans in the works to have National Night Out, and part of that is to have the community and all our local groups, our Girl Scouts, our Little League, things like that. So we do want to make an event for them as well, but we don't want to lose the focus of what the night is for, which is to honor sheriffs.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am?
I'm okay with giving, allowing them to use two thousand dollars for this, but I don't know if this is possible. Can the sheriff contribute something to the National Night Out?
I can certainly, we can certainly have the discussion with the lieutenant and the captain. You know, they do donate a lot in terms of their time, in terms...
You know, they do donate a lot in terms of their time in terms for that event. I mean, they had equipment there, we did have the helicopter fly over. Those are all costs that they incur. So they do have their costs as well, but we can certainly speak to the lieutenant and the captain about that.
Thank you.
And, and other local groups as well.
The KUADAs are going to rate, they can, I can put the heads of those organizations.
Sure, okay, absolutely, sir. Thank you.
Okay. Do you have anything else?
That was...
Okay.
Thank you.
That brings me to this point. If anyone else have any, anything, just, not that I'm encouraging us to spend every dime we have in surplus, but just so the body will know there's four hundred and two thousand in surplus. There might be some more now.
On number eleven, is there a direction for a change? Are we going back to the fifteen-twenty?
Yeah, we're going to reduce that.
Two thousand.
Or two thousand?
Two thousand.
Go to two thousand.
Yeah, two thousand is good, yeah.
So I have a question, I have a question for Ken. So our total budget, windfall will be four oh two. We built that thirty thousand into it. Did you request it, so it dropped down to three seventy, seventy-two?
That would be correct. Yeah, that would be correct. Then plus the, if the Parks and Rec Social Services Commission, if they fund the Blues Festival, then that would add back to the surplus.
So, so how much is that? Somebody do the calculations on it? Plus, we got the, the reduction.
Thirty thousand there to the Blues Festival. Thirteen thousand, so we, back to three eighty-five?
Both parts, I think that's about right. But I, I mean, I'll run the numbers.
Yeah, that's about right.
It's about right.
Then we got fifteen?
Well, ten and then I have three. Again, two thousand.
No, it's down to forty-five.
Yeah, so we say the twenty-five, but you might be...
Again, with the caveat that some of that money might not be spent.
I had one more point.
Yes, ma'am.
I thought we didn't have a cable commission anymore. I thought we changed it to social media, because there's...
Where are you looking? Where's that at?
Page twenty-eight, it says salaries for cable commissioners.
Oh, that must be for staff.
Well, there's nine hundred.
Staff.
No, I thought we got rid, right? Because we changed it to social media or some, something of that nature, and I don't think it pays a stipend.
That's correct.
You're referring to the, for the cable commissioners meeting stipend? Okay, yes, that would be correct then. So we would need to take that out of the budget.
Good job, right there.
So that save was thirty dollars a meeting.
Matter of fact.
Thank you for that savings.
Nine hundred dollars is...
Okay, very good. Okay, it is warm in here. Okay, so we have exhausted the budget, sounded like we come to an agreement. So how do we adopt? Is there, does a resolution that we should adopt? I saw a resolution that we should adopt.
Mr. Mayor, sir, the first, I think matter would be to move on to item seven. We've been doing our budget workshop, or you have been doing your budget workshop.
Oh, that wasn't item seven?
There is an item seven, which is formally in action by the City Council and the boards of the, the other agencies involved. So we want to make sure we open up the new item. And then, once we do that, sir, I can help with how we should frame the resolution motion.
Okay, you had asked this, City Attorney. Okay, here's the resolution, okay? Okay, so we're now on item seven. This item is for the annual budget fiscal year twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two. The Londale City Council, the Redevelopment Successor Agency, the Londale Housing Authority, and the Londale Cable Usage Corporation. Item seven, the recommendation that the City Council adopt the proposed changes to the budget, as we just discussed earlier, and decide on each item, and then adopt the resolution approving the budget for fiscal year twenty-twenty-one, twenty-two as amended. Okay, with that being the case, let's see. Let's have, let's have, okay, let's have a report. Who's going to get, you're going to get this? Because we pretty much kind of did what we needed to do.
Mr. Mayor, so the report was really part of the budget workshop. So at this point, it would be appropriate...
So it's in order to adopt the resolution at this time, right?
Right.
Okay. At this time, I will, the chair will entertain a motion to adopt a resolution that would adopt the, the budget as amended.
Mr. Mayor, I motion that we adopt resolution CC two-one zero-six dash zero-two-nine with the changes requested during this meeting.
Thank you.
Nobody picks up all seconded.
Okay, and it's been seconded by Mr. Pat Kearney that we adopt said resolution. I'm going to ask the, is there anything further you need to do, Mr. City Attorney?
No, sir, you did a fantastic job. Thank you very much.
All right, fantastic job. Is there any debate or discussion on the motion? Seeing none, I'm going to ask the council to vote on item seven.
On item seven, the motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, madam. Okay. We did it.
Pretty good timing.
Pretty good timing. Okay, it's time to adjourn. For adjourn, I want to thank the city manager and the staff, all the department heads for all your hard work that went into this budget. I think it's a, it's an exciting budget, a responsible budget, most importantly, balanced, but provides a lot of service to the residents and the stakeholders here in the City of Londale. So we really appreciate all the, the hard work that went into the budget this year. And it's an on-time budget, which would be going to effect July first. July first, so we're, we're on time. And we have a pretty good surplus, and the city's looking pretty well financially. With that, unless someone else have anything they want to add, we're going to adjourn this meeting. And I'm supposed to always read this thing, that I always, I always turn my page and never forget to read. Okay, the next regularly scheduled meeting of the Londale City Council would be held at six-thirty PM on Monday, July nineteenth, twenty-twenty-one, in these here chambers. It is now eight-ten, and we are adjourned.